Hospital extension or abandonment of applications, letters of motion, 12-1-86.1, 77 lot subdivision on East Bull House Road in Maple Avenue.
Mr. Draper, this should be our last request for extension. The only thing that was holding up is we needed the language approved letter of credit. And Mr. Cote approved it last week, this weekend.
There are finalizing aspects, not this board, but the town board, the investment committee, Kelly himself, and the board, and we expect it to be finalized in the third year. They have requested either extension, which will take it to the purposes of meeting for September 1st, 2011, to meet with the job of the case. Full notice, to meet the requirements, which I do want to make.
Hopefully it will be done by then.
That can go.
One more question this weekend. All right.
Motion made by Riley Sec, I make all those with favor.
Thank you.
What if they pay the new charges dates down to 30?
Sit in that seat, you have all the power, you can use your hand.
Okay, because I think the other two are going to be kind of best.
Go ahead, leave wherever you want.
Okay, I'm gonna put Blue Finch to first, 13-1-27, located on Lower Respor Road. Lot line modification approval.
Thank you, thank you. Madam Chairperson, members of the board, my name is Paul Bowe, I'm the attorney for Woodland Renovations. Mr. Cote is the principal of Woodland Renovations. We're here tonight because we need a lot line modification. And what we're really here to do is ask you to waive some of these requirements that are in your code to get a lot line modification. Because with circumstances here, we feel that having a survey and going through the process is really not going to be helpful. This is a situation that occurred in 1979 when Eugene Finch owned a lot that we're talking about. And Mrs. Bowe lived next door. When Mrs. Bowe went out to sell her property, she had surveyed that. And the survey showed that her lot line went right through the corner of Mr. Finch's house and through most of his backyard. And at that time, they prepared a new survey, it was legal description, and the deed was recorded to convey that little triangular strip to Mr. Finch to correct the encroachment. And that's what's all that was done. Whether they realized they needed planning board approval or any approvals from the municipality at that time, and they decided not to do it, or they didn't realize it, it was never done. And that's the way the properties existed to this very day. Mr. Cote bought the premises from Mr. Finch. He's, you know, now in a nursing home in North Carolina. This was his only asset. And he's basically living off the income or the proceeds from this sale. And it would be a hardship for him to have to spend money to go out, I mean, just making this application is a hardship. To go out and hire a surveyor and get a survey done, what really, we're not doing anything. Whatever was done was done in 1979. It exists, and Mr. Cote never bought the property, the condition would exist. If somebody else bought the property, the condition would exist. I'm an attorney and I practice in land use. So when I saw the lot line change, it set off bells and whistles in my mind, and I went and I did a further investigation, and I checked with Mr. Haller and if you checked with Mr. Golden, no, Mr. Klicky, right? Klicky. And they said, you know what? It's existed for a long time, but it's really a lot line modification under our code. Come into the planning board, seek approval for the change. And this way we can clear up any issues that might have existed. So that's why we're here. It's the only reason why we're here, because Ms. Powell said, listen, come in and fix this. So we're here to fix it. We created it. It's been there since 1979. There's never been any problems. From a title standpoint, the deed has been recorded, it's not a title issue. We've got good title insurance to the premises. And so we're asking you to waive these requirements and to grant us this lot line modification. That's really the nature of our application.
I don't think we've been part of any of this.
Do you probably describe the needs of members?
Yeah, just like, just like on the survey.
Well, that lot's already been taken away. It was taken away in 1979, so these people that bought the property never got this lot. It was conveyed out only before they got it. I think there's been two owners since that time. And their titles, they just didn't get?
Well, no, they, their deed has a description of the lot without this triangular parcel. They never came into title on. Mrs. Bowe conveyed it, of course you conveyed me on the property. So they're not, as far as they know, they don't even own the property. And if you've visited the site, you can see, and I hope you have my materials, because there's a survey in there. And the way they moved the lot line is a natural hedge road that runs right down the property. That's where everybody always thought the lot line was. And they were really surprised when they did this survey to find out that the lot line actually went through Mr. Finch's house. So, and that's how they dealt with it.
Went through his house?
Yeah, went right through the corner of his house. In fact, I know one of your requirements here is, you know, you talked about utilities, and you want to make sure there are no utilities that might have been on that portion that you're taking away from the other lot. Mr. Cote can tell you, he's a very experienced builder, he's done a site survey, there's absolutely no utilities from the Bowe lot that were on this triangular strip. In fact, Mr. Finch as well was probably actually on Mrs. Bowe's property. And with this conveyance, now it's clearly on his property.
Likewise for the septic system?
Likewise, yeah, septic system was...
So I'm approaching on that new lot line?
No, no. There might have been a little bit of approachment of Mr. Finch's septic onto Mrs. Bowe's, but again, this conveyance corrected that problem. The situation, like I said, has lasted since 79. Even the tax maps of the town reflect the Finch lot as it's configured now with that triangle strip and the Bowe lot configured without the triangle strip. So the tax maps show what exists. So everything exists. Tax map show what exists. And we're just here to get the board's blessing for what Mrs. Bowe and Mr. Finch did in 1979 so that could be some sort of public record of what occurred. And that's why we feel the survey's not really going to add to anything. It's not going to change anything. What exists, exists. And I think it's adequately disclosed on the surveys we presented to the board.
Well, I'll let Sean speak to the surveys and what the surveys could show. Certainly the utilities and where they are are something that aren't for, for this board. The applicant's basically saying, we need approvals to just get this approval. Whoever was entitled back then did. At that time, they actually needed a subdivision approval. Now it's much easier, they just need a lot line approval. And they need very little for a lot line approval. Under the code, the purpose of a lot line approval is simply to confirm compliance with zoning dimensional requirements and to ensure that existing onsite utilities and driveways are located on the parcel on which an existing building, which they serve and situate, gets put on a plan, chairperson signs it, and that confirms the lot. They don't want to do any of that, they just want to have you say it's accepted based upon the old survey back in 1979.
In fact, if I had just said, Mr. Golden, I understand, however, what we're doing, I shouldn't even say that, we're not doing anything. Whatever was done was done. It exists. Even if the board doesn't grant an approval, it's not going to change the fact that this lot, triangular strip was conveyed from Mrs. Bowe to Mr. Finch in 1979 to remove an encroachment. It exists. It's not like you're creating any new condition by granting us approval or asking you to create a new condition.
It exists for purposes of taxes, it exists for purposes of title searches, it does not exist for purposes of subdivisions. Illegal subdivision...
But for all intents and purposes, it exists, it was done. It's not like this board says no, and what's going to happen? That the properties now have to be conveyed back to this owner that, you know, is subsequently used.
Actually, this board should not approve a lot line. In fact, there were some health or safety issues that were determined when in fact a survey or inspection was done. This board shouldn't be doing that. If you're asking them to do it and just hope that nothing's...
Well, it's there, it's been there since 1979. The building department issued a building permit and a CO on this house, not the nation CO on a house that is on the neighbor's property. So something happened when the house was built.
Your experience in land use, you know that those things can happen.
I understand.
And one doesn't undo the other.
Well, I understand that, but there's been obviously a series of issues that went on here. We didn't create anything, we're just asking for this board's consideration.
I feel really, I mean, it's not an easy situation.
I'll let Sean talk to the issue of survey and utilities on the site.
The applicant submitted a survey form in 1979. So we think based on notes on the survey, that the survey was performed in connection with the transfer from Bowe to the purchaser at that time. It wasn't for the purpose of filing, it did not, it was not for the purpose of conveying that triangular portion of the property discussed in the night. In fact, the subject parcel, Finch parcel, isn't even completely shown in the survey. Right now, the applicant is asking for a waiver. There is not for renovation or survey. The survey that we have, you know, does not show any utility accepted, well, any perhaps fuel storage tanks or anything of that nature. So frankly, there really isn't much for us to review at this stage because we haven't received anything.
This board, it's your discretion to waive requirements for this lot line, including the man Mr. Bowe was asking, whoever the authority do say. I'll, as we do routinely, I'll read you the standard by which you can waive this. Any such waiver which shall be subject to appropriate conditions may be exercised in the event any requirement or improvements, one, are found not to be requisite in the interests of public health, safety, and general welfare; two, inappropriate because of inequity or lack of connecting facilities adjacent or proximity to the subdivision; or three, in conflict with the environmental, agricultural scene for historic resource protection purposes of Chapter 97. So those are the, that's the standard. I don't really think too afraid to apply. So it's, if you think that this has, is not representative in the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare, you have the ability to waive it. If you actually think that it does have some impact on the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare, then you really can't. You have no discretion, because we only have discretion to first find that and then you decide to exercise that discretion.
Is the only requirement, the survey, is that it?
The survey will, if a proper survey that tells the zoning dimensional requirements and identifies the site utilities and driveways, that's all that is necessary for a lot line to be placed on a map to then be signed by the chairman.
Sean, is that the case with the survey? Does it show any of that?
No. There's no utilities, no, by utility doesn't mean one subject.
It shows, it shows the driveway. And we can, I mean, the board will grant it, won't accept the condition that we provide a certification as to the fact that there are no utilities that serve the Bowe lot that are on these premises, whether it be well, or septic, or electric, or gas, or fuel oil tanks, or anything. We can provide that certification because there are. There's nothing for Mrs. Bowe's lot that is on this property. And we can provide that certification because you don't have a problem doing that.
Yeah, I just don't know, we have, in order for us to waive it, we have to mind one of the three criteria. I don't...
I don't see it fitting.
Yeah, I don't see it fitting in any of the...
My point is that requiring a new survey is not really needed in the interest of public health because it was already done. It's not like we're here asking you, listen, approve this, let us convey this parcel from Mrs. Bowe to Mr. Finch, and we'll go through the process. And it was done, it was done in 1979. Mrs. Bowe's lot's been conveyed twice, and it's 30 years old. If there's any problem, it would have arisen by now.
I can, I can see what you're saying.
And we'll certainly give you a certification as to the utilities, which is really the big concern. But if you look at the survey, it clearly shows the area, and it shows this is to be conveyed to Mr. Finch, and that all these encroachments are on the Bowe lot, and these encroachments are going to be removed. I mean, the survey was prepared with the basic intent of showing the area to be conveyed to Mr. Finch.
Can you even hide this from me? I mean, I have it.
Yeah, it was looked like the application. Got a file before. I have a copy of the deed, I have a copy of the tax map, listed all that information with my application.
You don't, the septic's not on there. You know, I mean, there's, it could...
If I didn't come around, this driveway, this, all this shows is the driveway.
I think that's part of our problem, is that it doesn't, the survey wasn't created for that purpose.
Because the survey is not going to show you the subsurface.
It can show you where the wells are.
It can show you the wells, so walk around promptly, he knows exactly where the wells are.
Okay. And many surveys show the refuge location, you can tell where the septic tank is, you can infer anywhere the leach field is.
And Mr. Cote can tell you where the leach field is for this property. He can certify that.
Now, we have to find, we have to find one of those...
Well, he can certify that the survey for his property is not...
What do I, is he going to certify that? I don't have to find it.
Because he knows the locations, went in there with the authorized septic people and looked at it before when he went to buy the property, located the septic system.
Okay. Can I listen directly?
Excuse me, Mr. Bowe, they located the septic system?
Yeah, he was exactly that.
How do they locate the septic system?
Call over the clean house.
Oh, yeah. So a surveyor could then call in the same procedure and spot it up.
Really, I don't know if Mr. Bowe will let you guys know, but really one of the things we're also trying to do here is, part of this bill, whatever this bill may be for this, is being paid by the Finch estate. Mr. Finch was a 55-year resident in Ocean. And he's down in a nursing home now, and he's on very, very limited resources. And in our, in our deal to buy the house, they agreed to pony up half the money, and we're trying very hard to make sure that he's setting up a tail on money.
No, I, I, I more than understand. I mean, the, the problem is, is we are bound by our code and our laws. We, we're not the town board, and if we are going to waive something, that's what our attorney's telling us, we have certain right, quite criteria that we have to meet. If it doesn't fit in that criteria, there's nothing we can do.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting, it does fit within the criteria because, you know, it's, a survey is not required in the requisite interest of public health. If we didn't do anything, it would exist. It's there, it's been there for 30 years. We're not creating anything new. So having a survey just shows us that.
Rick, did you read that statement as the first one, I think it was, as to public health and safety?
It says, "Any such waiver of any of the requirements is not required." So that's really all you're focused in on, is their request for waiver of the requirement. And you can waive it in the event that that requirement is found not to be requisite in the interest of the public health, safety, and general welfare.
If you don't think that it's in the interest... There's my Rick.
Let's pull the board and see.
Well, it's not going to, as it stands right now, it doesn't have any effect on the public health, safety, or welfare. It's not affecting it negatively or positively as the situation exists right now.
It can't determine it, right?
Well, but the thing, it's been in existence for X number of years. So if there has been no problem in 30 some odd years, are we to assume it's going to be a problem?
Well, there's a couple of issues, one of which David brought this up, is the issue of precedent. We require this type of survey to locate utilities for a lot line change. If you're saying location of utilities on the survey is not in public health, safety issue, public health, safety, and general welfare, it means that you're setting some kind of precedent with respect to the waiver of that for the lot line change, is that's one issue. Another issue is, and I'm sure Sean and Lee can talk more about it than I can, but it seems to me that even if there is not an evident failure of the septic system for that period of time, if you're clear, it's a complete failure of the septic system, of whether or not there was some contamination between septic system and water system, such as there might be elevated levels of contaminants, that's not something that's necessarily readily apparent.
It's not going to be apparent from the survey, the survey of the property's not going to show whether it's septic or septic.
The survey, the survey will show is that you had adequate separation between the well and septic.
We're not...
You know, even though it's existing now, we're basically memorializing it by saying it's...
But permits were issued. It's not like this house was built without any permits or approvals. I mean, COs were issued for the house. CO was issued for this house as recently as two months ago.
They left some, pulled the board here.
Some of the code requirements for separation didn't exist back then when the COs were issued. And now we're creating a lot line formally, you know, might...
Well, we're increasing the lot line, the lot size of Mr. Finch's lot. He was the one that was deficient and had the encroachment. His lot is now bigger, so whatever condition he had on his lot, it was there then, it's there now. The only thing is, the lot line has shifted over a little bit, right along the hedge road to remove any encroachment. That's all that's...
If we were looking at a lot line change or subdivision today, not this particular application, we'd be looking at the location of the well and septic and the separation between that and property line for instance. It may not necessarily be that the lot we understand now would be the favorable location. If we were to go and review this project, we might say another 10 feet, either way should be gone. Basically, right now, site unseen, we're saying this is an appropriate location with well, septic is, doesn't matter, it's just the fact that that line exists, it's acceptable.
Yeah, because we're not asking you to allow us to do this in the first instance now. It was done 31 years ago by two other parties, and it was done. I mean, you can't undo it. You can't be undone at this point. It exists.
Where exactly is the Finch lot in relationship to 17...
It's up top of the hill, third housing.
Third housing?
Yeah. It's up on top of the hill, on the corner, above Tower Hill.
Is there a road into the, the flag lot?
There's a flag lot behind us.
With the tax map in there? Handle the post side now.
Are we going to see some changes here?
Unfortunately, you know, I feel for, you know, Mr. Finch, standards are there so this way you do not wind up in a situation where you set a precedent. I mean, maybe Woodland would, I mean, it's not my job to say Woodland, you paid for it, or maybe it's Mr. Finch's break.
No, but Sean... Well, I don't think this sets a precedent at all, because to have somebody come in and say that you granted a waiver and they've lived there for four or five years is not the same. To set a precedent, they have to come in with equal amount of time and everything else being the same. And the chances of that happening are almost nil. So I see no harm in granting it.
We're not setting up a waiver because it's 31 years.
That's what...
Here's my question, Rick, and this is a question for you. What happens when this property changes hands again? Are they going to be in front of us again looking for another waiver? Or is this waiver going to be...
No, what, if you granted the waiver and approved this lot line change, that's all there would be, the property then is legally based, has the appropriate approval that you failed to get 31 years ago, you stand with the subdivision, and you're not allowed to get, have subdivisions, if there's a planning board that whose job is to give subdivisions, guilty of subdivision, that actually would have, would have done it and undone the subdivision, that didn't happen here. But if in fact you make that waiver and you grant the lot line change, unless somebody wants a new lot line change, there's no need for anybody in future to come back in. And I will also say that to, less than the board, because personally I think it's an interpretation, but, so less than the board, my firm will not be charged with the fee if you go up to this point in time or exaggerate. Thank you, Mr. Cote. Well, I, I feel that, I understand that the money is important, so that's why I'm willing to do that. I think this other is also important for, for present purpose.
You know, if I felt it would add something to the application, I wouldn't fight you on it, I really wouldn't. But the only reason why I'm coming in here and asking for a waiver is because one, it's financial hardship on Mr. Finch. I know his attorney sent the, the last to the planning board describing the situation and the financial hardship. And I know it's not really going to add anything, it's not going to change the nature of this application at all, it's not going to improve the situation at all. It was done. And you're coming here for the first time and saying, listen, we want you to allow us to do this, you have every right to say, no, no, before we grant any approvals to do something, we want this, 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 this. This was something that was done by our predecessors 31 years ago, and, and I agree with Mr. Andrews. I don't think you're going to impress him, because you're not going to have another application like this walking the door as he set us up.
And I, I see both sides of the argument. I really appeal for the whole situation. I tend to agree with bringing that, I don't, honestly, I don't, in my heart of heart, I don't think it sets a precedent for anything. But I also, I would believe that the board will search for a reason. If you came to us with a 31-year-old survey that showed us everything we needed to see, I don't think we'd be having this conversation right now. But the fact that the survey you're providing to us is missing a bunch of the information that we really should have, I don't think would be a really good question to grant or we think we need to have updated to. And honestly, I, I feel for this whole situation.
I think we can maybe provide the board with some sort of satisfaction regarding utilities without, you know, using this as a survey, some sort of certification. An engineer certification, an engineer, find out what it costs, give some sort of certification at the well and septic. Give some sort of certification that the well and septic is not located... It was valid, it's not located on the slot, it was never debated in the Finch lot, and it doesn't approach upon the Finch lot. And I understand that's a valid concern. Like I said, Mr. Finch would pay concerns like that. Want something more... More, do a survey, be willing to store, doing that, it's cheaper. Survey ends up being the same amount of money, how do you get survey? You know, I understand your concern.
But my position is, it's not, it's there, it's... And I ask you to approve it now and allow us to do something now.
I share a lot of Giovanni's concerns. I mean, Mr. Finch, long-time resident of the town, worked for... Like I said, I feel more for Giovanni here than... Yeah, really, I think being the survey guy...
That is your question, is Harrison Scott, is he still alive?
Um...
We don't know. Will you try to find him?
The surveyor, we contacted a surveyor named Don Stedj. Don has, at least, I don't know if he's around anymore. Mr. Garland was familiar with him back in the day.
Well, I was familiar with him, and I know he's not in business anymore, but I'm assuming... I don't know whether he's alive or dead, but I do know that his... The information would have been sold to probably one of the local surveyors.
So they might be able to perform the changes on the map?
I mean, I'd make a few calls to find out.
Yeah, they're gonna have to go out and re-survey it, isn't it?
Not necessarily. And really, that might be your best interest to the client, because it might save you a lot of time.
We never really tried to track them, Mr. Scott, because based upon what my surveyor told me and what Mr. Garland told me, seventy-nine years ago, the guy's not in business, who is? But we'll try tracking them, but I hope it saves you dollars.
Well, you might just be able to add it to the map. And not have to go...
Sometimes they don't like doing that. They wanna go out, redo it, re-certify, re-check everything, and...
Well, yeah, they're on the hook. Yeah.
Well, they can do a deep plotting and locate things and not certify that it's a certified survey that was done in the field. They could indicate it's a deep plotting and they check things out, right?
Yes, it was, it's still total of the survey. It's got a lot of work to do. He didn't think Mr. Scott was still trapped, and he wasn't sure if he was alive. Coincidentally, he actually did survey adjacent to the lot, in connection with another. And he actually had a copy of this survey that we're discussing, the deep plot. He didn't know who of anyone had taken Mr. Scott's information. When I did ask him about re-surveying, he said that he would likely, it's gonna perform under his seal and serve, I mean, would have to go out and verify this information with the deal. He could just take the survey, copy it over, yes, it's... Not what he would do. Perhaps he could want to... He didn't want to suggest it.
I was like, well, it wouldn't be a line.
So, and it's your question, he likely wouldn't even send you to go out and get a kill survey.
You know, I'm pleading to the boards...
They have asked for a waiver. I think we need to take a motion on...
I just wanna ask one. Is there anybody currently residing in our...
In the house?
Yeah.
In the Valley House, yes, in the Finch House, no.
How long, how long has Mr. Finch been there?
It's been done two months.
Okay, so people were living in...
No, Mr. Finch was living there, yeah. And Mr. Tate bought the house, he's in the business, he's gonna rehabilitate the house, do some renovations, and sell the house to, you know, another family that's gonna come into the community and enjoy the house for the next thirty years. Now, like I said, if I was in the land use attorney and bells and whistles didn't go off in my head when I saw this conveyance for this triangular portion, some other real estate attorney might have just said, "Yeah, I got title, don't worry about it." And it would have happened, and the property would have been sold, and nobody would still know about it to this day.
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver at this point. You can end, somebody can second it even if it actually goes through the process.
Okay, I'll second this now.
But I think I could give out survey, because you have an engineer certification. As far as the location of the wells and septic with respect to that lot line. I mean, that's the primary concern, whatever's along that lot line between the two courses.
In the oil tank?
Damn, they didn't see the oil tank. The Valley's oil tank is way, way far away.
Oh, it wasn't ever on the ground?
No, it wouldn't have been here. I can't think of it on the ground.
Because that would, most houses...
Yeah, but they wouldn't have put a tank sixty feet from the house. The Valley's house is so far, it was a lot, at least ninety feet from it, sixty, seventy feet. So nobody's gonna bury a tank sixty feet from the house for the oil and have to push it uphill to get to them. I think it's unlikely that there are subdivision facilities, but we can't make that determination based on a free...
Because I didn't want to leave our engineer house.
Listen, if the board's willing to grant the waiver and make that a condition, we'd be willing to go out and accept that condition and find an engineer, go out, certify...
Or do we have to... Okay, so we have to vote. Okay, so... Yeah, how do we work?
Well, you can vote this motion, and then it fails, if it's gonna fail. And then a new motion could be had. Or the person who made the motion and the person who seconded it, who agreed to an amendment to the motion, then you can proceed with...
What did you, what were you suggesting we have change?
That we lower the full survey, that they do get a licensed engineer also, if they want, to certify to locate the well and septic and decide that lot line would be inspected once.
And just oil tank, anything our engineer...
Yeah, we're...
I don't find that unreasonable, if you make this process go forward.
We wouldn't necessarily need a full survey. I mean, it needs to balance it, and it needs to...
Just have the location, just the location, that's it.
And I agree with that.
Full size of the lot?
No, you need the location of the well and the septic, and if there is a oil tank.
Get a list from our engineers, what you know.
So you have to agree to...
I agree to that, I agree to...
So then the motion is modified?
It's modified, so...
This would be, just to make it clear, this is going to be a certification of actual engineer license in the state of New York. And it would go on the current survey, or the old survey, for that.
Correct.
I don't know, how's it gonna put on the old survey? Or we can just give a, you know, just a certification that these examine the premises?
What is the chairperson going to sign?
A resolution, you can actually say it's with the certification.
They're also asking that, because it's supposed to be in a map, in a form acceptable filing to county clerk.
But we don't, we don't need to record anything. That's what I'm saying.
But it's more than just the title picture, you're saying that you want no map whatsoever.
What I'm saying is, we don't really need to record a map, then the sufficient evidence of public record for this board to adopt the resolution referring to the lot line change, showing the Adoni map, survey map as an exhibit, and the certification from the engineer. And that'll be in the town's building file, planning board file, and it serves as adequate notice to the world.
But they have to understand that what they're waiving then is not just the survey. They are waiving the requirement at all for a map in a form acceptable to file in the county clerk's office, including any that information.
Is it really necessary to have it in the county clerk's office if we're just looking at where the location of the well and septic is? And if there is an oil tank in it?
Certainly, things ought to be filed with the county clerk, but that's not your role. But your code, and I was gonna just break, but your code says, your code says that you... Anybody asking for a lot line, cool, right here, has to give you a final lot line adjustment map in a form acceptable for filing in the county clerk's office. That's what they're required to do on their Goshen's code. All I'm saying is that he's asking you also to waive that.
So it's a question of, is it represented properly at this point on the tax map? Tax map gets, in order to make those modifications on tax maps, wouldn't they have had, wouldn't they have had to have the deep representation, if we need some bounds on the deep, in order to make the changes on the tax map as recorded or as held by the county? It's already on that tax map, popular.
That's because it was standard deep.
So what more would filing a lot line then do if it's already on the tax map?
I don't think that, I don't think that would change any minds on the map. But the issue, though, is that in the state of New York, as long as you're in a jurisdiction that has a plan, and this town had a planning board in nineteen seventy-nine, you cannot create a subdivision or a lot line without approval of the plan. They don't have that. So they're actually subject to somebody coming in and saying it's an illegal subdivision. The town, I believe, I'm not sure if it's that limitation, but the town, bidding to come in at some future date and undo this, because it wasn't approved.
Wouldn't that limitation be there of some sort?
I'm saying, I'm not sure that there is in this particular region. But it doesn't, you know, I'm not arguing that the town do it. All I wanted to make clear is what you are waiving. And what you are waiving is more than just a survey. You're waiving the preparation of any map whatsoever that would identify this lot line change in any form. And what you would be requesting instead is some certification, professional engineer license in the state of New York as to separations of...
Well, on the big deal, he's going on to actually measure the separation, what's it called, Sean? Could he just take a tax map out there and locate by, you know, because you're basically looking at footprints, really, not detailing the designs.
I don't think it's a tax map, and this is, it's not a permission for a tax map. Probably absent the survey that we're looking at tonight, and then try to expand on that.
Build that map.
Yeah. So essentially, it would be field measurements rather than a survey, but things won't happen.
But as far as putting it on a map?
Yes.
Neil, would there be anything in your office as far as mapping of the property?
I believe we probably already looked at it, but I looked... I thought we looked through files and found that we don't have anything additional.
Well, you have a motion, and you have a set.
I need to show this, because I'm sorry, I just don't feel comfortable. We have a code. I mean, I feel, I'm sorry...
You have code, but the code has a waiver provision that says, listen, the interest of justice is not gonna be harmed, and the spirit and conduct of this code is gonna be protected, and public health and safety and welfare is gonna be protected. It's okay to waive it.
The last one.
Anyway...
Nothing about interest of justice.
Oh, well, a paraphrasing.
Until twenty-five years from now, until twenty-five years from now, and something comes up that neither the current property owner or us ever knew about, and now we're on the hook, because we didn't have a survey.
Well, you're not on the hook in the sense that nobody could ever come here.
No, no, not that we're on the hook.
I understand, but I don't... The survey is gonna, the engineer certification will certainly, you know, remove concerns. I don't see what a survey is really gonna do for the situation. It's not gonna improve it. It's really not gonna make a difference whether there's a piece of paper that shows, you know, what's already a matter of public record at this point. It's not gonna improve anything.
Or my new motion?
The amended motion?
How did second that?
All of the paper?
Well, hold on a minute. What actually is the amended motion now?
The amended motion was that we would waive the grant, that we have to provide an engineer or survey or certification. It would have to be on the map, tied back to this map, showing the location of the well, the septic, the tank.
So it's just a certification indicating that there are none?
Well, we know there are.
That served the Valley property that's on this slide.
No.
I don't know how he's gonna...
It wasn't just a matter of saying that it was sitting across the line, it's a matter of where it's located.
Well, I don't know, again, I don't know how that's gonna improve the situation. Whatever there is there, as long as Mrs. Valley's survey or septic system wasn't on this portion and now is on Mr. Finch's lot, what difference does it make where Mrs. Valley's septic system is on her lot and Mr. Finch's septic system on his lot?
Well, I just think that the question is, do they want to authorize a lot line change? I think these are both undersized lots.
They're high level, so yes.
They're both undersized lots, and one is becoming even more undersized. But if there's a...
It's seventy-one.
Well, it also requires subdivision. The issue is, is that, I think this is what Giovanni's thinking. Let's assume that when they determine where it is, their septic is right next to the, to the well. I don't know that this board wants to put its, if we're not, a lot line adjustment on that situation.
Well, if we have the, if we have the...
Right, but they don't want to provide that. They want to provide simply that it's not on each of its properties.
Honestly, we're gonna need to know both sides of that lot line.
Which one's that?
Right. Sean, I don't know if Sean or Rick, would it be appropriate for an engineer to make... Did his certification make reference to this survey from nineteen seventy-nine? Is that an appropriate acceptable...
They could probably go out and do field measures and put that on.
Put that on the nineteen seventy-nine survey and make it part of his certification?
Well, except that he would be making it, I mean, he would be taking that information and creating his own field survey map.
He's only certified to his measurements.
Exactly.
Just to his notes and survey.
And I could not, in the state education law, I could not take the survey and amend it and submit it to a growing young war. I could make reference to it.
Make reference to it.
That I utilized it to create another map, but I could not mark this survey as work as my...
Honestly, I think that is what we, you're getting at, right?
Let me throw one more issue at you. We don't have the right to go into the Valley's lot. I can't send a surveyor on Mr. Valley's lot and start traping around trying to locate their septic system and their well. I mean, they're, we spoke to the neighbor, that they're a Greek couple, that they don't speak much English, that they pretty much keep to themselves. And, you know, I don't know how I'm gonna go knock on the door and say, "Listen, can I have your permission for my surveyor to go walking around your lot and find out where your septic system is?" I don't have access to the lot.
It's done all the time. You know, somebody likes a lot, you have to look at what's off-site, two hundred feet off-site. You're going into people's lots all the time, identifying where the wells and septics are.
My understanding of the state education laws relates to surveyors is that they have a right and proper notice to enter properties other than their client's property, that there's a notice procedure, and I do not think they...
Well, that's all I could post. I'm gonna get an engineer now that's gonna have to go out and locate all the subsurface, that's probably more than just the survey. And then he's gonna have to send out notices and a procedure to go on and locate all the infrastructure.
We have a motion...
What's required, what's required under the code?
Is a map identifying where the utility...
This is all that I understand. I'm asking this board to let's be reasonable, and let's look at the situation and not go strictly by the book, A, B, C, D, this is a unique situation, it's existed for so long. And it just seems ridiculous to treat it as if it's a new application, and that's why we're appealing to this board's sensibilities to give us the relief request, and not put us through this huge expense for really no reason whatsoever. It's the condition that already exists. It's not like we're trying to do something new. It's not like, it's not like we're trying to do something new. It's, it's done.
If it were a new application, it would be a lot more extensive than we'd be asking for.
Of course, if it's a new application, I say you're absolutely entitled, why don't we even fight you on it? I'd say you're entitled to a subdivision map and you get a nice big map and it'll be staffed by the chairman and filed at the county clerk's office.
Honestly, the code says we are entitled to it, whether it happened in 1979 or not.
I, I understand.
So don't say we're not entitled to it.
I, no, I didn't say you're not entitled to it.
That's what I, that's what I heard.
No, no, what I said is, do you, do you no doubt if we were asking for a new?
We're trying to meet you halfway here, and I'm not getting that feeling from you. I'm not getting the vibe that you're really appreciating.
I said that we'd really go out and get an engineer to certify that there are no utilities for the Valley lot that are on this lot, but somehow it keeps coming back to some sort of survey.
I, I don't think there's anybody in this board or in this room that does not feel sorry for your client that would like to help them out. However, we, you're, we're in between a rock and a hard rock, so I'm going to move this along and we are calling for a vote, I think. Do you want me to, we got a second? Daniel, have questions?
Again, what is the amended motion again? To clarify.
The amended motion, what are we voting on, is what I'm saying? Was to waive the requirement, however, engineer or surveyor's certification, if you have to provide a high map showing the location of the two parcels with respect to the wells and septic and the tank, and that's all it was, and a popular. Well, that's okay, licensed engineer or surveyor.
Okay, do you want to start?
Let me make sure that I'm set.
Who's?
I'll say.
Go, go, please.
Go.
Hi. Hi. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the consideration the board has given this, all the time it's given this, and I thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay, um, we're doing Adamas next. I'm sorry, we were changing agenda because we figured these couldn't be fast. I'm sorry. Okay, Adamas, 121-1-30-3.6, site plan approval for retail, landscape sales located on 17M and Fisher Lane and the HC is.
That's actually section 12. 121 is probably in the village.
Okay.
But it is.
Your name for the record.
Lou Vidal.
The planning board, I think most of you have received copies of some pictures that he submitted. We had asked for a signed picture, and then I think there's some pictures of the actual location.
Okay, where, where are we on the county with this?
It's been sent, but we have not gotten a response yet.
Do you want to see the wood? Lee, who's got the wood in this paper?
No. So you, you're, you're planning on putting your most quality just right up on the grass there?
Actually, it's not grass, it's, it's gravel that grass grew through.
So that will.
Through all eight years. I think the, the issue was we picked up the map, it's just the signs and the property.
Were there, there was something that had to be better defined on the plan or something?
The, that I remember is about the trees. If you wanted more trees, you're on 17M, that anyway.
So where, where are we on the trees?
Okay. There were a number of issues. One was the waiver, the screening waiver for the trees. The other one is a waiver of requirements, and then I may mention the septic. The tree issue is what were the main things that we're here to discuss. Mr. Adamas proposed six or seven pear trees, 100 feet apart, alone in frontage. He felt, I felt they should be about 50 feet apart, and he felt that if you put them 100, 50 feet apart, it would not, you could not see the piles of material on the side. And my feeling is that you could, and the board is up to determine, make that decision as to whether you need them 50 feet apart. You can see the photographs of the site, it's open, there's grass in front. Looking at this picture and looking at the other photograph we have, it seems to be a lot more gravel on the other photograph than it needs. I'm not sure.
Yes, because the grass grew in while the cars were parked there.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
So this is an old picture.
Yes.
Okay.
The trees in front of the depot, the police station.
Yeah.
The brachyparas. They've been there for, you know, those are like, ladies. So they're what you call a medium sized tree. You really shouldn't use brachyparas, you should use another variety. Or a brachyparar.
It's been based on that. It's.
Are you asking?
No.
Oh, okay. Because I also have brachyparas, and we used to raise them on farm, and they do grow wider than that and taller than that.
Well, that's what I guess would have ensured.
Absolutely, they do.
But those pear trees in there, those ones are huge.
Soares, no, soares.
Soares. Yeah, because those are.
I don't expect you to catch up on that. Pick up, pick up.
Soares are huge.
Yeah, those things.
Those are, those are huge. They do, I, I agree. Is there something else that we can use besides brachyparas then? Or do we have to use them?
Well, the other issue is I want to put a number of trees there that's going to block my piles.
No.
You have two tenants that were there.
We're not looking at block.
No, we're, we're looking for something.
If he's saying bring it to 50 feet instead of 100, at 55 miles an hour, you're just going to be looking at trees instead of my pile.
There may certainly be something in between, that's what we're trying to figure out.
That's what we're trying to do.
We don't want to lose the visibility, but at the same time we want to see trees, not see just the space. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
Any suggestions?
Well, you.
Listen, I, as far as I'm concerned, piles of mulch, 100% better than what was there.
That's what I, yeah, I mean, there haven't been.
So if we put trees every 100 feet, I'm a happy man.
Yeah.
Visualize 100 feet, this wall's about long, 50 feet.
I got you. How many feet is the property? Along 17M?
Five. I think 700.
Whatever it says, I believe.
It's at least 700 feet because you were talking about six to seven trees, 100 feet apart.
Yeah, I can.
Just out of curiosity though, with me coming up, there's got to be trees there, but for the last two applicants, there wasn't. Can you explain to me, Ed, why you didn't push the issue with the other two applicants? Put trees there as a car dealership or workers there?
Nobody was here at that time. None of the trees.
Cars just moved data there last month.
It has not been back and forth with the planning board since I've been here.
So how departmental shift in there?
Because I felt, because I allowed them to go in based on the fact that I felt that cars were in fact the same animals all virtually as, as the recreational vehicles, which were there. That was my call, I may have been wrong, but I thought that recreational vehicles and cars were virtually the same animal.
My take is we're looking for rateables, and you need diversity in terms of different types of, you know, marked for lots. I think this one, you know, fits a number of categories. I think, you know, this particular application probably could use no trees, but, you know.
Yeah, can we waive 700?
I mean, I, I understand, I understand we want to beautify things and, okay, maybe we go with the recommendation, but put them every, you know.
Well, how many feet would you think would be reasonable?
At the speed going down, I see Mako has pear trees, so I, I was going to do air.
So let me tell you the standard for waiving in this one. Waiving at the left.
I'll give you this one.
This is, this is the code, this is, this is the code. Now, board passes. With respect to the screening requirement, the screening requirement may be waived where it would prevent the necessary display of merchandise for public viewing, provided that the planning board finds that such display will be orderly and attractive. So if you find that the display will be orderly and attractive, you have the right to waive all or a portion of that.
What if you were to have some load shrubs in front of the, are you going to have cement barriers?
I am not.
No?
No, no barriers whatsoever.
Well, you do separate the various layers.
It's pretty. Just. Eileen Ullrich, I believe, way back when it existed, Bert Geller, way back, he's got to be in his 90s, right? I think it's like before. Is his wife still there? No, she died. Why is, why is he in North Carolina?
That's where he is.
Eileen has two, two nephews, one of them is in Sydney, New York.
Tough paths, frankly. That way they're aerated and then also so they don't start decomposing.
But I mean, would you be driving in this area here that's dotted out? Would you be driving outside of that to get the?
The vehicles, what the loaders will be.
The loaders.
Yes.
Yeah. How many individual piles would that have?
15.
15 mulches?
I thought it was 15.
15 mulches and then five stone, one top.
What is this reading for? Do you know what it is?
I want to get a more rough, probably.
It talks about landscaping is continuous green landscape offered, shall be maintained along the road, consistent with trees, shrubs, fields, meadows, natural areas and lawns, provide it doesn't interfere with park site distances. So it doesn't really talk about something specific.
So we could go further if we wanted.
Yes, you have, you have the ability, the moment is going to be orderly and attractive. You have the ability to waive the landscaping, to, to a degree, to a great degree, orderly.
Is your sign going to say anything about product that's available?
No. The way you see the sign is orderly and attractive. You'll see the product. Yeah, that would be on one side of the trail and the other side, you know, discussing the mail. You'll see the product, that's going to be the sign. Nothing of advertising and reading of what's available.
But when you're traveling at 55 miles an hour, it may not make much sense of the piles.
Okay. Piles of mulch, it will make much.
Well, they go on 58. You said 55 miles an hour.
Correct.
They're not going to be looking at. Look carefully at piles.
They'll be looking at the color distinctions of the piles. And that's probably they'll be pulling in. No different from a dealership, if you're driving by cars, you're going to see a difference of cars, and you're going to go and see what the difference of the cars are.
The words that.
Absolutely.
So I'm, I'm looking at the trees and looking at the size of one, two, two aspects. I mean, maybe 100 foot, I'm, I still feel it's going to be closer, 75 foot. I mean, that, that's one tree in one and a half of these buildings. That's three or four piles in between, that are passed between trees, based on the footprints that you're proposing. I think the trees themselves also add up to your look, to your own business. You know, it's a landscaping business to make it a little bit more attractive than driving down the highway. It doesn't look like a quarry where there's a stockpile of material.
Correct.
I think the trees actually would draw somebody's eye to the lot as well, you know, as far as, without creating an obstacle to seeing what's within the lot.
It's all a matter of opinion. That's all it is. You may be looking at trees, there's a lot of people that drive by my place right now, and I think that's always one of those for sitting here, trees and trees, that I don't have.
I, I see, I see a mulch line, helping with the mulch line on the road. That's, that's a catch to my eye.
Yeah.
You know. No, I have no problem with a certain amount of trees there, but I can't see why so many. That was the question.
I think once they're actually set out there, I don't know, if you put a marker or something, you know, the spacing, if you actually took a look at it, if it's made of stuff, a comb there or something, just to see what it looks like.
It'll be nothing when you paint $200 tree, put it. Sorry to put it so bluntly, but I'm talking about to 250 on a tree, adding five more trees is another thousand.
Well, if you're putting it at 75 feet, adding two more trees, but you're maybe.
You know, what's 50?
Well, suggesting 50 doesn't mean we agreed to.
Okay.
That's just an idea that was put out. But also where you're showing the trees on the back, I don't really necessarily need that many trees along the back where the trees are already. You might go save there by.
There are actually corkscrew willow bushes trees, and the reason why I want to put them there is because in the back of that, as he stated, they're not really trees, there's poison, sumacs, a lot of garts. If somebody were to go through there and just clean it up because they were sick of it, or other people move in and they're getting, you know, rashes and stuff, at least I will have something there in a couple of years, and that's why I wanted to go with that. Because it is just gart trees and that, there's not any nuts.
Well, the, one of the things I think that Lee would have talked about is basically site visit, there's some cones something, but some discipline, you know, 75 or 100, and then the board goes, like, the board can't vote on it tonight.
Cannot.
Cannot. Legally cannot. The county, it had to be referred to the county, the county has 30 days, and this board legally and state law cannot vote until it gets a report back in the county. So they're waiting for the board, and they don't have your attention to vote on it. So it's going to have to be put over one of the, under state laws, the board is, the board I think probably would vote on it tonight, but it cannot. But since they cannot, I think what Lee is saying is that if you put some combs out there 75 feet apart, then when they come back next time, they'll be able to make a reasonable judgment as to whether they think that's a visual or hundreds, it's okay.
So, clarify, you want me to put a cone 75 feet apart, a 12 inch cone, and you're going to see that that's going to be fine for a 20 foot wide pear tree at 20 foot tall?
They have their imagination.
Really?
I'm not being selfish or anything, I'll say that. I mean, they look at plans all the time, and, and they're used to going on site visits and saying.
It's kind of looking, like, looking at a balloon up in the air and visualizing the tower. You have to use a little bit of.
Okay. So I'll put cones, and you want pictures of the cones separated, is that?
No.
It looks dry.
But we don't know when you put them out and you're like the board. And we have to wait for the county on this?
Yeah.
How many days are left?
If there's something else we can put instead of cones, because if people go by and start kicking the cones, I want you to drive us high and see. I mean, is there something else that you?
A stake.
You want a stake? Okay, that's fine.
A stake, some.
With cones, okay.
Happy birthday, happy birthday.
How, how many days does the county have left? I mean, I just feel sad.
We have 21 days until the next meeting, so it's going to be there.
If it's not, you're allowed to vote.
You can vote.
Okay.
So you don't have to wait any more than you have to wait.
Okay.
You're drawn.
Signs are good? That's all.
That's all that's gonna be on? What do they mean?
Uh, not, not classic. Plagued.
It's coordinated?
Yes.
I think we can hold the election signs.
So yes.
Not so, no, like the election signs, like you said, like the elections.
There was just one other issue, and that is the display area. To me, it says gravel parking and display area, and the display areas have all location. They can have up to ten percent. If you measure the piles, the piles indeed will be much less than ten percent. But the pile's gonna move around the site. So just for the sake of not having an issue about this later on, where if they wanna have more than fifteen piles, which is shown here, to give away for the ten percent, allow up to twenty percent display area, which is essentially this area in that dash line. So that they can put the piles within there and put extra piles in if they want to in the future without exceeding the ten percent. I think it makes sense to me, because to me, the whole thing is a display area, not exactly where the piles.
I would make that motion.
Second? I'm confused what the motion is.
To waive the ten percent per display area.
Allow it to float up to twenty percent.
The whole dotted area on the, on that.
More flexibility in operations.
But you are restricted at twenty percent.
It'll still be capped at twenty.
Yes. Yes. Then the waiver is pursuant to section ninety-seven dash fourteen. D. Five.
So we had a motion, is it a second? Do it a second?
I second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else?
I have a couple items, just since we're here, you might understand. Like Rick said, you can't make, take any action on this, but we, we need to, initially, Evelyn gave us another plan, and we've just had a couple engineering matters. One had to do with the septic system. This septic system on here, as you've done in previous applications, you have the septic system tested as a condition of your approval, to make sure that it operates, you don't have any problems with it. I suggest that in this case you do the same, make a condition of your approval that you tested, and it's operated. Dye test, which essentially wait much dye down with the toilet, some water, and then you wait to see if it breaks through. The other item we had actually was on the plan, it's this is a plan prepared by the applicant, I don't think there's any probation to quote for that, but it's on top of an engineer seal for the installation of the septic field. I know we were gonna speak to an engineer.
Right.
Okay. And I don't know how you pick out with him.
I couldn't do anything without the approval of the trees tonight, he didn't wanna go and do it twice. So he was actually hearing from what would happen with the trees, whether it's a A or a A, and then he'd go forward with it.
I just don't think it's appropriate that this board could plan basically on the engineer seal.
So if we wanted to, at the next meeting theoretically, we could vote approval condition upon that.
I don't know if you wish to, personally, you haven't seen. Yeah, I.
Wish it.
That seal is his son, it's on a different company, it's on a different firm.
That seal is his son. Yes, I know, but it's not appropriate right now, this seal and this title watch for this work right here, for you to work on top of this.
So then he'd only have to do one map, this one's important.
Yeah. That's up to the board.
Would anybody have a problem doing that?
So it'd be the same, no, there's no problem with that, Sean brings up a good practical point. Is that you're approving the plan that you have seen, but what you're approving are the elements that are on this plan. Just put on a new plan by an engineer. Then that's something that Sean can go ahead and monitor and make sure that the plan's.
Last thing we had to deal with twenty-five foot, in this case, similar to a meat check, where they own the center of the road. I understand this application is a known parcel, but similar cases require dedication at script to the town, how it works. Because it's an owner, it doesn't mean that it can't be dedicated.
What do you want dedicated, what should be dedicated?
The parcel goes all the way to the center of the road.
Correct.
In those cases and other applications, it requires that the applicant dedicate to create a right of way. Up to, it's typically, again, it's twenty-five feet off the center of the road. Something that road is now in the right of way.
You don't think the state has done that over the years?
Not on the survey that was submitted. I think it's very similar in that regard to the meat check, the state highway, that wide and the, yeah.
Well, that would have to come from you.
It would, but I don't know if there's any, see any reason why you wouldn't agree with that.
Can I ask?
I have no idea what you're asking.
Okay, what happens to?
Let me explain.
A lot of properties, older companies, have changed lands owned to the center of the road. And municipalities have, slowly, whenever somebody comes before a planning board, building this one, we ask for them to donate those lands, break me my world, back to the municipality. Just because it's included, and it makes things cleaner.
So the ditchway makes it. So you need a.
To the center of the road.
So you need a signature from the owner.
There would actually be some legal documents to go ahead and offer them to the town. But I think what you can do is ask the owner to if he's willing to do it, these are not lands that the owner can really use anymore. It is underneath the road, most of it is underneath the road. And in fact, the law says that the town will go on there to do what's anyway, it just makes it clearer that the ownership now is the boundary that changes.
But we went through this before, the possible sidewalk walk going through there too.
The last meeting, that maybe in, within the next hundred years, there might be a sidewalk going through the property. So where, where's that twenty-five feet go then? The twenty-five feet that we're talking about would go to the town.
When you talk, which way are you talking?
To let you know.
The town doesn't have restrictions.
Would ask it to offer it, to, to offer to the town, if the town is separate. Offer it to the state.
Do you own to the guy? Drop the limits that really considers it.
But that's the state ditch right there as well. There's a dish that the state put in the south. Sean, I think from the get-go, although I can appreciate the reason why you recommended it, in all the other applications where we required that, the applicant is the owner.
I don't think that.
This gentleman, this applicant does not own the property.
I think that there is no harm in asking the applicant, just to speak to the owner. The owner says, I didn't have anything to do with this, it's not gonna hold up the application.
I'll ask him. But you wanna write?
Yes.
Is there a form or something to give him?
We can prepare the necessary documents.
Okay.
That's all you're.
If he does.
Okay, sir, are there any other issues, so please, I think.
Just one, one note. He's talked about putting a gate up at the entrance off of the road, and if you just look at one of your pictures, you can see the stones that are there, or the rocks that are there. That's the location, I just want you to make sure you're happy with that.
There was a forty foot vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
Pull off the block.
They used to bring trailers in and out of there, when it was actually a trailer.
RV place.
RV place. So you would have, you know, thirty-five, forty foot trailers going in and out of there.
On that gate, are you gonna put a sign like you have at your location, on the gate itself?
No.
No returns?
Maybe no returns.
We wear them though. So the only signs are gonna be on the trailer?
That's it.
And what size is the sign?
Three by six. Three, four, high by six, please. Uh, three, four, high by six for wide. And depending on, you know, again, where you're going, and how, what trees are gonna be put there fifty miles an hour, some of the piles are gonna be blocked inside. So as you come by, you'll be seeing a pile sign, pile sign. Site capture.
Trials? Piles could be blocked with a sign, say?
Until, you know, some materials be. The trail is only nine and a half, ten foot tall, the product that comes out, this is coming off a fifty foot trail.
I'm just wondering whether the signs are doing any good there, as the crowd, the question, if that's signs, it's clearly gonna benefit.
That's up to you.
If they won't.
Okay, anything else?
We'll get a resolution to you.
Great.
And we'll actually, we'll send it to you as well.
Okay.
Thank you all for agreeing, take care of yourselves.
I have a question, on page eight, there's a section that said hold.
Right. The way that, the way that happens is that it's really gonna remind you that these are fine, you're still.
Okay, so Rick, where to start?
Well, why don't we start with two findings that the board needs to find in order to approve this, there on page eight or page nine. I'll read each one, and probably after each one, should have a motion that the board saw finds, and pass that, and go on. And I'll move to the specific details. First finding is that the planning board finds in accordance with the requirements from the scenic road corridor overlay district, this project will not result in degradation of scenic character, will be aesthetically compatible with its surroundings, will minimize removal of native vegetation, except where such removal may be necessary to open up scenic views and panoramas, and will locate and cluster buildings and other structures in a manner that minimizes their visibility from the road to the extent of traffic. Motion would be in order to make that final.
Can I make that motion?
Just wanted to comment something, are we already in the motion now?
You need a second, then you can have a discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Start just.
Can we have a discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I was curious, in both, both cases, in both, these both in scenic character and possibly this next one regarding surface water pollution, instead of saying will not result, we changed the language to minimize to the greatest degree. I don't know if that's customary in our language, but.
In order, in order, this, this is the finding that under your code, you need to make before you can approve. That's what, that's really what was underlying your review of the plans all along.
Neil, we're good. Okay.
So these are the findings that you need to make, if you don't make these findings, you need to change the plan to be consistent.
That's the way our.
Yes, you have to do it like this, or you need to make changes in the plan that would result in no degradation of the scenic character.
Can I call for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Second finding.
I'm just gonna abstain.
That's fine.
The next finding would be that the planning board finds in accordance with the requirements from the stream corridor and reservoir watershed overlay district, this project will not result in degradation of scenic character, will be aesthetically compatible with its surroundings, will not result in erosion or surface water pollution from surface or subsurface route. So motion would be in order to adopt that final.
Don't move.
Sir? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Everybody strapped in? Now, I mean, it's your it is your practice to go ahead and read every one of these specific conditions. It's not required at all, you have this resolution before you, simply say that we have the resolution before us, and we adopt the resolution as it is with the specific conditions. I will read them, I have no problem reading them. All right. Number one. These are the specific conditions. While the significant impact of the proposed project on wetlands were studied in the FDIS, owing to the changing nature of wetlands in the applicable administrative regulations and judicial interpretations of such regulations on the federal, state, and local governmental levels, the applicant must, at the time of the signing applied by the chairman of its application, confirm that all relevant regulatory agencies approve of the application and its impact on the wetlands. Two, all wetland delineations and concomitant impacts to the application, including the location of wells and other structures, are subject to all regulating authority, including but not limited to the jurisdiction of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, DUC. To the extent that any such delineation or regulation impacts the proposed plan as above as approved herein, the applicant must conform its application accordingly prior to the signing of the platte. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall provide proof to the building inspector filing of all restrictions on the use of any lots as required by the permit issued by the DUC. The restrictions shall be in such form as is acceptable to the planning board attorney and or counter attorney as appropriate, in order to ensure proper deed restrictions are filed with the Orange County Health Department's office. Three, this approval is conditioned on the applicant satisfying the requirements of the realty subdivision law obtained approval from the Orange County Health Department prior to the signing of the platte. Four, all conservation easements were proposed at the time of final approval, including but not limited to easements pertaining to those lots designated by the applicant, slot number seventy-six, open space parcel A, and open space parcel B, shall be in such form and file in such manner simultaneously, including the filing of the platte, as is satisfactory to the town attorney and agreement with the FDIS to accomplish its intended effect. Any and all easements protecting open spaces must be drafted in accordance with the FDIS, including but not limited to sections three point six one, three point six four thereof, and the town code, including but not limited to section ninety-seven dash twenty-one C two. Prior to the distribution to the town board for approval, subject to approval of the planning board and the planning board attorney. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall provide proof to the building inspector, following such easements with the Orange County Health Department's office. Number five, prior to signing of the platte, the applicant shall revise note twenty on sheet one, state, quote, each season, the initial filling of any pools must be performed by a bulk water supplier, end quote. Simultaneously with the filing of the platte, the restrictions contained in notes nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one shall be separately filed as deed restrictions, in such form and manner as acceptable to the planning board attorney. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall provide proof to the building inspector filing of the restrictions with the Orange County clerk's office. Six, prior to the signing of the platte, the applicant shall revise note seventeen on sheet one to state, quote, "The limits of clearing and disturbance and the posting of appropriate signage and fencing during construction indicating such limits are shown on sheets seven through eleven. The signage and fencing of the limits of clearing and disturbance shall be posted conspicuously on the site prior to any site work or other disturbance disturbances to the site," end quote. Simultaneously with the filing of the platte, deed restrictions regarding the areas to be permanently protected shall be filed in such form and manner as acceptable to the planning board attorney. Prior to the issuance of any building permits, the applicant shall provide proof to the building inspector for the filing of the restrictions with the Orange County clerk's office.
Rick, can we just add the third or, yeah, third point line? Limits of clearing and disturbance should be posted, should, and the posting of appropriate signage and flagging. We had the word "flagging" in there, and also "after signage." On the next line, "have a little flagging," that's consistent with other.
With the appropriate signage, flagging, and fencing. And signage, flagging, and fencing of the limits.
And Rick, just a question, I know the plans have changed quite a bit and so on and away. Are all these notes still appropriate, the note numbers? Where it references note seventeen or?
I don't believe those have changed.
They haven't changed the numbers? No, those, those, those notes are on the drawings, they just want us to change the language.
All right, number seven. In an effort to mitigate the visual impact of this project, any and all street and exterior residential lighting fixtures shall be designed as approved in the final lighting plan prior to final approval. Footnote added since March third, two thousand and eleven meeting, the planning board waived the stated requirements for street lighting pursuant to section eighty-three twenty-five A eight, noting that the lighting of the final lighting plan is adequate and appropriate. Continuing, with shields to reduce potential sky illumination and nighttime glare, the lighting plan shall include, one, lighting at the entrance of the project, two, lighting at the seven intersections involved, and three, lighting around the central common open area consisting of no less than five lights, subject to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number eight, prior to the signing of the platte, the applicant shall revise note thirty-three to state, quote, "All tree clearing shall occur between October first and March thirty-first of any year so as to mitigate any adverse impacts on roosting Indiana bats. Tree clearing between April first and September thirtieth shall only occur with the prior approval of the town planning or environmental consultant, and shall be limited to within twenty-five feet of those trees that, in the opinion of the town consultants, are noted with potential Indiana bat habitat." Nine, the town engineer shall confirm with the United States Fish and Wildlife Services, if you're the Department of the Interior, that they have an approved protocol involving temporary minor construction within a wetland with a known or assumed bog turtle habitat. Should it be confirmed that there is such approved procedure of USFWS, the applicant shall follow such procedure. The applicant shall also have an expert observed and oversee the construction activity scheduled to occur within the wetland tent area and report back to the planning board as to the propriety of the work, even if not dictated by the USFWS procedure. Such expert may be any expert not previously retained by the applicant, who is named on the Department of Environmental Conservation's list of bog turtle experts and shall be at the expense of the applicant. In the event there is no such USFWS protocol, the applicant must return to the planning board to determine the proper procedure followed if it chooses to, if it chooses not to comply with specific condition number eleven of the original resolution approved. Ten, the stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWIP, was approved by the planning board, subject to the town engineer's modifications contained in his March tenth, two thousand and eleven letter, which must be made prior to the issuance of any building permits. Eleven, prior to the signing of the platte, the bond and plan must be proposed by the applicant in such amount and form as approved by the planning board and its consultants for the purpose of ensuring the integrity of off-site neighboring wells and the impacts the applicant's proposed development. Such plan must include provisions to ensure the prompt investigation of complaints received from neighboring properties and the correction slash remediation, both temporary and permanent, of any adverse impacts of such wells resulting from the applicant's development for a minimum period of three years following the full project build-out. Number twelve, prior to the signing of the platte, the applicant shall provide appropriate deed restrictions in such form and manner as filed in as acceptable to the planning board attorney, specifying the maximum bedroom count on each of the lots upon which final approval is based, together with restriction, with deed restriction, that no further, I'm sorry. Together with the restriction that no future accessory dwelling may be constructed on approved lots of the clustered development. This will assist in ensuring compatibility with visual impacts and mitigations of the project. Such deed restrictions shall be filed with the Orange County clerk's office simultaneously with the filing of the platte. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall provide to the building inspector for the filing of such restrictions with the Orange County clerk's office. Thirteen, follow-up off-site well monitoring must be conducted by the developer, even if the water system is made part of an existing district, after the build-out of eighty percent of the units. That is the equivalent to sixty-four dwellments. At the time said testing is performed, information regarding well depth and top depth settings will be sought for any previously affected wells nearby homeowners who consent to such testing. This information is to be used to consider additional off-site impacts warranted by the data. Fourteen, the water system proposed for dedication in the town must be designed to permit future off-site connections. Fifteen, the applicant must connect all cluster lots, lot numbers one through seventy-five, to an existing municipal wastewater treatment plant, including all necessary approvals involved with such connection. Plans for this connection, including the extension of the force main along Old Chester Road, the connection to the Hamiltonian Park collection system, and the onsite waste water pump station, shall be prepared by the applicant to the satisfaction of the town engineer prior to the issuance of the first residential building.
Rick, I think you've modified the language there. In the second sentence, it says, "Plans for this construction, including the extension of the force main along Old Chester Road," comma, would like to strike the connection to the impotency collection system and the onsite wastewater treatment pump station. Strike that, and then just say, "shall be prepared," so it shouldn't read, when we go back to the top of the sentence. Plans for the, for the connection, including the extension of the force main along Old Chester Road, shall be prepared by the applicant to the satisfaction of the town engineer prior to the issuance of the first building. Which way?
You're saying, strike the wastewater.
We, we need to, we need to connect our onsite pump station to the, it's either gonna be connected to the Hamiltonian Park force main, depending on its condition, or the manhole that, that force main connects into. The way this is written, it is saying there will be a connection to the Hamiltonian Park force main. We're not sure if that connection is going to be made, we're not sure of the condition of that force main. So that would need to be determined by the town engineer during construction.
But either way, you're gonna have an onsite wastewater pump.
That's correct.
Like you said, you wanted to strike that.
Well, I.
It's onsite, that's yours.
Okay, then that's, I will leave onsite.
Yeah, the pump station.
Just wanna strike the connection to the Hamiltonian collection system.
Mike is absolutely right. We won't be able to determine what that kind is gonna be until we actually have to make, make a determination. If it was not a condition of our, if we're looking right now, then I wouldn't have a problem with striking the portion that says, the connection to the Hamiltonian Park collection system. However, I agree in that the onsite wastewater pump should remain. And the reason for that is, right now, the current plans show insufficient detail for the construction of that. Raise port of process, which is hard. So further plans are needed so we can determine what, what exactly is going into construction of that pump station.
I will read the condition in the preliminary approval, this is condition number eighteen. The applicant must connect all cluster lots to an existing municipal wastewater treatment plant, including all necessary approvals involved with such connection. If the applicant is not connecting to an existing municipal wastewater treatment plant, it will be required to submit the design of an altered wastewater treatment plant and SCIS to the planning board for approval. The plant must attain all necessary regulatory approvals from the DUC. I mean, dedicated is required. So there's nothing specific there.
I think you can just maybe strike the word "Hamiltonian Park" and just say the connection to the collection system and onsite, that would work.
That's fine.
Would you rather have the question system now? So we're just gonna say, so we're gonna say, you know, onsite, just pick it up, I get it, onsite wastewater pump station.
Could it be, exchange village collection system? For number twenty-four?
If that's essentially what we're looking for. What was that, that?
Substitute village of Goshen for Hamiltonian Park. That is, that it would be a connection to the village of Goshen collection system.
Well, as long as that doesn't conclude going through that part. I mean, the possibility is gonna hook up to the, I mean, it's gonna ultimately end up with the ghost.
Right.
Okay, as long as that doesn't conclude that, by the way, they're spreading it now.
Right. I don't think it, I think the condition is doing a pretty requirement on the applicant to prepare engineering plans for how they're gonna make that connection.
All right, number sixteen. The final platte must show no disturbances of wetland eight area under the acceptable threshold in the Metropolitan Conservation Alliance, which recommends at least a seventy-five percent radial zone of disturbance surrounding the site, per the FDIS, with the appropriate signage acceptable to the building inspector. Number seventeen, prior to the signing of the platte, the applicant shall offer easements in such form and manner as filed in as is acceptable to the planning board attorney over the stormwater infrastructure and drainage facilities in favor of the town, granting the town the right, but not the obligation, to enter upon the property to maintain the stormwater infrastructure and drainage facilities. Additionally, the homeowners association document shall include a plan adequate to the town attorney, which is acceptable to the town attorney. In consultation with the town engineer to ensure that the stormwater infrastructure and drainage facilities are adequate to repair and maintain as necessary by the homeowners association. Such easements shall be filed with the Orange County clerk's office simultaneously with the filing of the platte. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall provide proof to the building inspector for the filing of such easements with the Orange County clerk's office. Eighteen, prior to the signing of the platte, the applicant shall set forth specific construction details regarding the trail materials and the location of the trail connection to the town park, and incorporate onsite specific traffic mitigation measures as approved by the planning board. Nineteen, prior to the signing of the platte, the applicant shall provide a gate detail for the emergency access connecting to Works Side Drive that is satisfactory to the town engineer and the town highway supervisor. Well, they're not required, and usually don't have them as a, as an entity that has sort of voted the number down. It's always assumed that both the town engineer and the highway supervisor are gonna go get input at the fire department, but if you wanna put in here, after receiving the input of the, of the fire department. Number twenty. Prior to the signing of the platte, the applicant shall provide in such form as is acceptable to the town attorney easement for highway purposes to include the area along the southern portion of the Colton Farm along Noel Road near tax parcels eleven dash one dash ninety-eight point one and eleven dash one dash nineteen, and an offer of dedication to the town of the twenty-five foot strip of land along and on northeast east wayside of the centerline of Old Chester Road, vice acting applicant's tax parcel eleven dash one dash ninety-eight point six. The easement and offer shall be simultaneously, shall be filed simultaneously with the platte and the Orange County clerk's office. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall provide proof to the building inspector for the filing of the easement with the Orange County clerk's office and the offer with the town clerk's office. Twenty-one, prior to the signing of the platte, in accordance with the zoning code section eighty-three dash twelve, all trees within an area of proposed disturbance, having trunks twelve inches or greater four feet above the ground, must be identified in the plan so as to make such final subdivision in site plan design layout, including roads, other infrastructure residences, consistent with preserving such trees to the greatest extent practical. To accomplish this identification effect, the applicant must superimpose the conservation analysis plan over the proposed overall site plan. The applicant shall also, prior to the issuance of any building permits, submit a plan identifying the protective measures to be taken during construction to protect trees that are not planned for removal. Such plan shall be approved by the planning board prior to any building permits being issued for the project.
Question?
Yes, sir. Yes, you're right.
Now, this is, on this particular comment, the start of the first part, which is the trees, and the trees have been located in the plans for a couple of years now. And the, and the disturbance limit has also been identified, you know, shown on the plan so you know where it's gonna be disturbed, is not gonna be disturbed. And you, you, the, the net of the disturbance limit line is actually that the lady, you know, Neil, he suspected it.
Right, no delineated inspected, and the trees within those limits are majority, um, are cut. So what are you asking?
Well, you're, you're telling us that we have to get this plan approved prior to building. You're saying it's general. Yeah, it's all in the plans.
Yes, correct.
There's no chance that any other trees can get cut down, that shouldn't be cut down.
Well, we still have to delineate, we still have to delineate the service, the limits of the service. And that has to get inspected by Neil.
I'm okay if the condition stays, I just wanted you to understand the status of this. Parts of many of these that have already been accomplished by you, informed by you. Right, correct. Twenty-two, prior to the signing of the platte, the applicant shall submit a well monitoring protocol for on- and off-site wells for approval by the planning board. Twenty-three, a specific location and orientation of proposed residential structure within lots are not hereby approved. Prior to the signing of the platte, the applicant must identify the specific locations of these structures and demonstrate their compliance with the zoning code, including and unlimited to sections ninety-seven dash twenty-nine and ninety-seven dash forty-one. Bone tests or other methods approved by the planning board must be utilized so that the planning board, prior to the signing of the platte, can be satisfied that the specific design layout of the project is code with the planning board.
Rick, can we just go back to this one? Back in February seventh, two thousand and eight, we compared the analysis submitted to this board, which established the building locations, finished floors, bridge heights, and the determination of this board that we had fully analyzed that, and that was now just up to the building inspector to review it on a case by case basis. So, you know, we have language in there that, you know, we have, we had to look back at the blue test prior to getting our maps. You know, it was understanding, we already done this. And we were, the chairman was even quoted in the minutes, saying, "Good job."
Well, in order for that good job to be solidified, you're saying that all of those houses have to be built in the exact same spot that they're shown. And I thought that was not the case.
No, there, I mean, you know, maybe a couple be here, there. There's not much room. But the other, the key is the other. But the other, the key is, the other, the key is the location and elevations, and we're saying that that analysis really set the, you know, the bridge elevations and the finished floor elevations. And we actually moved lots around during that analysis to make sure. No, we didn't have to, we actually just shoved around lots to bring it back, back to.
Clearly, this board went through that analysis and were very pleased with the applicant's proposal. There was still half of that. This condition was put in here, and it is stated until now.
No, this, we need to do that analysis after this.
Is that the preliminary? This has been, this condition, we have gloriously gone over many conditions that you want to change.
And my memo, I see several memos that we've completed this. It was our understanding to complete this analysis.
What is the pleasure of the board? I guess the applicant is indicating that we want the last sentence to be completed in condition number twenty-three?
Yes.
As each structure gets approached, like, passed through before here?
Well, part of the application we, like, will, will the site plan.
The site plan, the control of elevation?
Probably a lot, well, the finished floors are, the bridge heights, finished floors, and these supplemental elevations.
Happy to be surprised that we've succeeded in accomplishing this on all the developments we've had so far. It has been working, so I think we can go along with it.
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? And if we take out the second sentence, actually, the third sentence, the last sentence, but in the second sentence, it says, "Now, prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant must identify the specific locations of these structures and demonstrate, insert there to the building inspector, their compliance with the zoning code, including a, which is ninety-seven twenty-nine and ninety-seven point nine." So I think that was the essence of what the board included. Correct. Is that yours?
Yours.
Or would it be a, would be a building permit application, the applicant must identify? Because then we'll have a specific plan for that lot. What specific, does it have an exact?
Style, elevation.
So it's not prior to the signing of five?
No, prior to the issuance.
So the building permit. Twenty-three. I propose we modify as follows. The specific location and orientation of proposed residential structures within the lots are not hereby approved. Prior to the issuance of the building permit for any particular lot, the applicant must identify the specific locations of the residential structures and demonstrate to the satisfaction of the building inspector that they comply with the zoning code, including but not limited to the sections ninety-seven dash twenty-nine and ninety-seven dash forty-one. Twenty-four. Prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant must admit to the town attorney, state that they can file into the homeowners association, and the town attorney must agree the form of the homeowners association agreement to ensure that there are sufficient protections and financial ability to support all the obligations undertaken by the homeowners association in accordance with the planning board approval. Twenty-five. Sidewalks shall be located on both sides of the internal roads of the project, one side of the emergency access road connecting to Brookside Drive, one side of the entrance Boulevard two slash from Old Chester Road, and there shall be one sidewalk between lot fifty-one and lot fifty-two connecting the cluster to the trail.
Does that show down there? It's not particular.
Prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant is to propose an economic model for the anticipated life of various systems, including the water system and sewer treatment system, and the replacement costs involved, to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the town board and its consultants of the feasibility of the proposed system. Twenty-seven. Prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide sufficient engineering and construction details of pedestrian pathways for approval by the planning board with input from the town regarding, one, the longevity and practical use of bicycle and pedestrian uses of such pathways, including the connection to the town park and Craigville Road and the Heritage Trail, and, two, the pedestrian slash bicycle use of the Brookside Drive emergency connection. Twenty-eight.
Rick, on that one, we're all clear on how we're, to get to the Heritage Trail. It was our understanding that that.
Yeah, and if this condition said we were going to go to the town board, the guarantees, as everybody knows, we got to the town board, determined that they did not want a trail that connected on our site to the Heritage Trail. Unless you're saying bicycling down, you know, this is regard to bicycling on our entrance road and then down Old Chester Road to Heritage Trail, or down Brookside Drive to Craigville Road and then up there, you know, that's fine. Just not sure with that, is required. This is really, it's really a town board issue, I think, as to where the funds, is that pleasure of the board, which is the decision.
So connecting to Heritage Trail is going to be difficult.
How did we be difficult to, to tell the board? There was actually a master plan that chose a connection for the roadway, there was actually a million dollar grant, it just.
So we'll just strike in the Heritage Trail? Is there another modification we want?
I mean, the rich, Rick, the, the, what says, construction details of pedestrian pathways were approved by the planning board with input by the town. We've met the town board several times on this, and they're, they're with their positions. It shows the, the L one betrayal, and they've asked that the applicant provide L one betrayal contribution. Ultimately, it's going to go towards the, to Hamilton Park or, or, okay.
Is it so Hamilton Park gets a contribution and the rest of the trail gets a trail?
It wasn't actually, I understand the decision was the town board. This doesn't really cut against that. And you never know what the town board would want. A lot of the time, this actually comes into being within the R C O. So all, I mean, it does, this doesn't bind you to go ahead and.
I mean, we've also had conversations, we've also had conversations workshops regarding the need to connect the cluster to the park, and it would be a, would, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, help, you know, which you have something more natural, because it is going to assume environmental sensitive areas instead of, you know.
Exactly.
Well, that's.
To the side, to the trail.
To the trail. Rick, I guess, keep moving forward, like you said, across that, the Heritage Trail, across that, I guess, right.
Well, there's no problem with the Brookside Drive, because we're building that connection anyways.
I'll propose to put, prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy, and insert, and to the extent desired by the town board, the applicant shall provide sufficient engineering and construction details of pedestrian pathways for approval by the planning board with input from the town board regarding, the rest remains the same, except taking out the Heritage Structure. You all right? Twenty-eight. Prior to the issuance of any building permits, the applicant must offer for dedication to the town board the roadways and adjacent sidewalks to be constructed in accordance with the approved plat, notwithstanding the town's acceptance of dedication, sidewalks provided for in this application, the maintenance of the sidewalks shall be the responsibility of the homeowners association.
That offer comes up at, before the roads are complete?
It would normally be at the same time with the roads being offered.
Well, it's a, I mean, do the woods get offered after the wood is finished? Does that bring, can you offer it? I mean, because you're going to have all the permits prior to completing the roads.
Well, that's a, it's a, prior to, as well. Can we offer? It's a good question. Can we offer the roads and sidewalks for dedication, not the construction?
Not constructed yet.
Not finished.
And certainly they have all the permits prior to completing the roads.
Right. Well, they can make the offer. As long as they make the offer, we're okay. And when the town decides to, if, and when they decide to accept it, they can accept the offer. Twenty-nine. In accordance with the approved phase, all areas identified in the approved plan is being preserved and not to be disturbed after fenced, marked, flagged, and or signed prior to any equipment being moved onto the property, so as to protect the vegetation, soils, and water features from degradation. All such fences marked and flagged and signed shall be in place and acceptable to the building inspector prior to any site work being performed. See also specific condition number six. Thirty. If the applicant or any contractor or agent of the applicant receives any directives, notice, or warnings with regard to habitat preservation or timing of clearing or excavation by any governmental authorities, such directives, notice, or warnings must be promptly, must promptly be conveyed to the town board, planning board, and the building inspector. Thirty-one. The applicant shall submit two copies of all submissions to and responses from the involved agencies between the time of this conditional approval and the signing of the plat. On previous resolutions, we've been changing the bomb to radio turn, is, we're just going to make that change now. That's fine. Appreciate it. Prior to signing of the plat, the applicant shall revise note twenty-seven to state, quote, remote water meter reading and telemet.
Telemeter.
Telemeter, thank you. Control systems will be provided in accordance with the town specifications to monitor the wells and proposed residential water usage. Radial read meters shall be provided for all residences in accordance with the town code. Thirty-three. The shape and design of the stormwater basins are approved, provided that prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant provide additional details showing plantings in and or around the stormwater basins. And riprap discharge is subject to the satisfaction of the town engineer to mitigate the thermal effect and impact of dischargeers to streams, to the extent agreeable to the town engineer in and around the site. We change agreeable to practical. Yes. 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 So the last phrase is, "To mitigate the thermal effect and impact on dischargeers to streams to the extent practical to the satisfaction of the town engineer in and around the site." Thirty-four. Wetland areas shall not be disturbed without prior approval of the agency having jurisdiction in the planning. Wetland areas shall be provided with temporary fencing during any period of construction of the site work to ensure no encroachment. Such fencing shall be five feet outside the area to be protected. Thirty-five. Wetlands are marked on the plat on individual lots. Prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant must use proper environmentally sensitive area, decent signage or application. Thirty-six. Prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant shall revise the phase in plan to show the road extension of Brookside Drive as part of Phase Two. Additionally, prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant shall revise note thirty-one on sheet one to remove the word, quote, substantially. Thirty-seven. Colors and materials of the exterior walls and roofing materials shall be limited to those approved by the planning board prior to any building permits being issued for the construction of residences. Colors and materials shall conform to the rural siting guidelines and comprehensive plan. Thirty-eight. Water saving fixtures must be used to reduce the quantity of water consumed to the greatest extent possible. Certificates of occupancy shall be, shall only be issued to the client for such obligation. Thirty-nine. There shall be no further subdivision to this approved subdivision owing to, one, the fact that the overall density of the approved undeveloped plans was calculated toward the density of the approved portion of subdivision. Two, the visual impacts of this project and the associated mitigations undertaken. And three, the overall uniqueness of the approved layout of this project. The lot line change on the one point five one acre area of Westy House Farm, adjacent to the Boulevard entrance off Old Chester Road, shall be accompanied by deed restrictions to encumber such transfer in accordance with the intent of this open space area. Said deed restrictions are subject to the approval of the town attorney. Prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant must obtain an owner's endorsement of this project in accordance with the town code and submit the executor endorsement to the building department. Prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the applicant shall provide proof to the building inspector. the applicant shall provide proof to the building inspector in the filing of these restrictions and the transfer of property with the Orange County Parks Office. According, prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant shall revise note sixteen on sheet one to state, quote, all drilled wells that will not be utilized in accordance with this plat must be properly manned and capped and decommissioned prior to the issuance of the first residential building permit, in quote. Might emphasize my mission is to be approved. Forty-one, prior to the signing of the plat, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the town planner dated May twelfth, two thousand and eleven. And the last specific condition, number forty-two, plans for the water supply system, including any modifications to the water treatment building in the connection to the Hamptonian Park distribution system, shall be prepared by the applicant to the satisfaction of the town attorney here. Plans shall be of adequate detail with construction of site facilities, and in the case of the treatment building, shall include mechanical and chemical treatment plans, electrical and telemet, telemetry.
Telemetri.
I have a kid. I need everything. I need that. Structural plans and details prior to the issuance of the first residential building permit here, and then your typical general conditions.
Rick, if I could, since the resolution was drafted...
Just don't ask me to pronounce that word.
Did you repeat that, Rick?
Since the resolution was drafted, we've been reviewing the plats that the applicant submitted in terms of the meets and bounds, improvements, and those items. One item that I'd like to consider tonight, I discussed with Steve, is that the sewer pump station, which is eventually going to be owned by the town, is currently shown on a lot that's going to be owned by the HOI, and access to the pump station will be by his men. I think we should discuss possibly creating a utility parcel rather than to have that on a, on a lot that's owned by the HOI. I don't know if you wish to do it by condition or some other means.
Who's going to hold the utility parcel?
The town.
Do we necessarily probably have anything as opposed to part of the plan? Could they possibly use as monitoring well as soon as possible?
I haven't correctly looked at the...
Kind of look at their patient, we're in the open space area, a lot of them.
I, I know where they are, I just, we weren't, we didn't have any involvement with the structure of the referral, but we, we had the expectation that we could.
Of course, it's leaving flexibility, perhaps. So if it's kept in decommission, you know, maybe to be abandoned later date or something, certainly at this point, maybe position for beds on the water, you see.
Well, the sewer district is going to be created by the town.
Right.
So this is going to be a lot that's owned by the town.
So will be actually owned by the town?
That's what Sean was suggesting.
Similar to the water tanks over at Hamiltonian Park that are owned by the town. Some of your other...
That way the town has complete control.
So that way they know you.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be... I assume it's accessible by road.
Yes, it's adjacent to a roadway, so it would just be like any other lot. I don't think they have infrastructure on it.
On forty, we're deleting the word, okay. Uh, number forty-three.
Oh, one question on forty then. So we don't want to grab the wells in? You want to... At least, and it's an excellent suggestion, would be that we would save those. You have to do monitoring later. There's the potential then to utilize these wells for that one.
That's fine. I'm proposing, based upon Sean's comment, condition number forty-three, the wastewater pump station for the project shall be located on a separate utility parcel to be dedicated to and owned by the town. All right, so that is the resolution. And as is normal, a motion would be in order to approve the resolution as read according to modifications made. Thank, thank you much.
Meadows.
Meadows. Right, they do make those.
Is there anybody here from Nibleton or, no? I would choose...
Um, you should. I mean, not leave the whole hill. Sounds like Elvis. Does everybody have a copy of the letter from the, um, John Canning, who is your traffic engineer?
Congratulations.
Does everybody have this thing from the...
No, sir.
Well, it's going to make it difficult. I would think that we're not going to have those. Yes, right, um. Neil, can you distribute that June first letter to them? Not the second, but give it, make sure that they have it. And we'll push this over to the next meeting. Basically, what this is, is that consistent with, uh, prior discussions on this application, there was an old D E I S, now new D E I S is being prepared, and there was the issue of coming up with the proper traffic issues. We already dealt with one issue, dealing with the intersections. Um, there was another issue that came up about traffic counts. Apparently, what happened was the traffic counts ended up to be much lower than they thought they should be from your traffic consultants. And so they're concerned that it's not truly accurate picture. And so there's lots of ways to deal that with the engineering science of trafficology. Um, but traffic engineers go ahead and have various ways to try to sort of regulate this to make it more normalized. And so your traffic engineer, John Canning, is suggesting that in order to sort of normalize this, there's several different ways, but he's suggesting that we got one. But I think it's not fair for you to do that on the fly this evening. So Neil will distribute this June first, two thousand and eleven letter. And I think he'll be reading it and discussing any decisions. All right, that's it, on maple.
I have a question back on the pitch. The motion that was approved talks about waiving the survey requirement and instead the certification of professional work.
It was waiving the requirements of the code for a lot line map. Generally, but substituting in its place something that is very similar to you. It's just, it's quite a problem, which is why I don't, why I couldn't understand why he was very pleased with it. But the motion, as I understood it, was that Lee was saying that you have to have a licensed engineer or surveyor prepare a map. Doesn't have to be a survey map, but a map noting the utility locations on, on both lots.
What I didn't hear was, in that motion, was approval of a lot line modification. Did you work during that?
No, they were, they were waiving that aspect of it. They, they need to now bring that, the modified map to the board. The board will look at it and then decide to go ahead and approve the lot line change.
So can you refer to this?
Just, just to press, I think Condes is here. Uh, the pursuings are no longer in contract with Rigor, and I was asked by Jerry Fine to announce that they're not going to be pursuing using the town roads for construction purposes.
Basically, it scared them off. It put them at an extreme competitive disadvantage to the other neighboring projects that are occurring in our neighborhood, and they felt it's grossly unfair that they would be having to provide a maintenance bond when none of the other competing developments would have that same requirement for, for Houston Road or Gate School House Road or whatever. So, um, they backed out. So we're, we're back to square one, trying to find another buyer. So a likelihood would probably be no time. But apparently, the last couple of meetings were the straw broke the camel's back, so to speak. Someone's given a forum after a public hearing is done, and...